Good morning, welcome to the special meeting of Calaveras County Board of Supervisors.
Let's put your mic on.
Sorry, Susan. Good morning, and welcome to the special meeting of Calaveras County Board of Supervisors for July 16th, 2024. If you're able, will you please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
Supervisor Paul, if you'd please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll move, we'll begin with the regular agenda. Madam Clerk.
Item one, ordinance planning. Find project within the scope of general plan EIR for purposes of SEQA. Conduct a public hearing. Adopt an ordinance comprehensively updating the Title 17 of Calaveras County Code, the county zoning ordinance, and authorize summary publication and a brief property description.
All right, thank you. I am opening a public hearing. Here.
Well, thank you, and good morning, everyone. Just, we're really excited.
That's how I turn it on.
It's on. Oh, it's on. The light's just dim. Like some of the rest of us. Really excited to be here. We started this before I retired. Three years, all the work was done. I get to come back and take the glory for it. But the glory really goes, exactly, it's go to Gina. She has worked really hard on this all this time, as well as with our consultant, Martha Miller, and the Planning Commission did an incredible, tremendous amount of work going through line by line, as they did with the general plan. And so, it's really been thoroughly vetted, and we're just really happy to be here today to take this final step on this part of the project. We still have, as you're aware, a number of other implementation measures working on, some of which include zoning ordinance updates, but we had taken the other side because we knew they would be controversial, more complex. We wanted to not bog down the entire update with one or two really controversial items, but we will be bringing those back to you. What I hope to do in the next month or so is to bring a study session to you, sort of look at what these other ordinance are, set some priorities, let you know where we're at, because we are working on some of those right now, and to sort of give you a chance to sort of weigh in and tell us where you think we want to focus our attention, so. But with that, I will turn it over to Gina, who is really the brains behind all this.
You're too kind. Okay, so, just kind of a quick overview, and then we'll kind of do a little dive in and go through the code and see what it looks like, and we'll do some explanation and navigate, make sure you guys understand it. So, what we're looking at today is actually a two-part project. So, we have the first ordinance, which is the zoning code update, and then the ordinance following this one, which is the zoning map amendment. So, first things first, part one. The purpose was basically focused on three parts. Updating land use regulations to reflect current uses and practices and create a more concise and user-friendly set of regulations. Number two was for compliance with state and federal laws and regulations, and the third and final focus was on implementation of the 2019 general plan. So, October 11th of 2023 kicked off a six-week-long series of special meetings with the Planning Commission, where they reviewed and edited the preliminary draft. We had lots of interaction with the public. Consultant was available the entire time. Lots of discussion about what this, what we wanted to see, made lots of changes. So, after that week, six-week-long process, code, I should say, the staff and consultant came back and incorporated all of the suggested changes that were made during that time, and March 6th began the final review process with the Planning Commission. So, at that point, we were able to present to the Planning Commission the entire code for the first time. At that point, they made some minor changes just to ensure cohesiveness and clarity, nothing major, just a lot of last-minute grammatical things, just some minor edits. So, really, you can summarize the, all the changes up into the three areas that I just previously described: code usability, compliance with state and federal laws, as well as general plan implementation. So, most noticeable changes will be found as we have restructured the entire code. We've added tables, diagrams for visual clarity. We've added cross-references to clarify, to clearly present information throughout the entire code. We've replaced that long list of uses with land use classifications that classify all land use activities, and according to common characteristics, we've broken those down into use types, which include residential, public, semi-public, commercial, industrial, transportation, communication, and utilities, agricultural and natural resources, and finally accessory and temporary uses. Performance standards are now replaced with additional regulations, which include standards for specific uses. These requirements are to minimize impacts to protect the health, safety, and welfare of not only the occupants but of the general public. Specific limitations have been reorganized to better understand, so that we better understand of where and under what circumstances these uses apply, all of which can be found now in the very user-friendly land use regulation tables for each base zone category. All uses are now defined. If you're familiar with current code, you'll know that not all of our uses have definitions, and we have definitions for uses that are not enumerated in code. We have multiple definitions for single uses and just the opposite, and it makes things very difficult for us to make land use interpretations. So, we've cleaned it all up. It looks really nice now. Everything is defined. We have land use classifications and definitions, which are all found under Subtitle VI, Terms and Definitions. Standards for specific uses are supplemental standards and requirements to minimize impacts for uses and structures on surrounding properties. Noteworthy examples of these changes, the first one is Chapter 17.25060 under Animal Keeping, which now applies to the keeping of animals in residential zones R1 and RR and resource zone RA on parcels of less than 10 acres. This came about primarily because, over the years, our staff has fielded numerous complaints of large numbers of animals on smaller residential properties in residential neighborhoods. So, understanding that these properties are really more hobby farms and not really commercial agriculture operations, we found it necessary to put forth some sort of regulation to help minimize the numbers of animals on those small residential lots. So, now, animal keeping is an accessory to residential uses, not as a standalone primary use of the property. Provisions of this title actually exclude youth-oriented projects such as 4H, FFA, and Grange. Limitations now include minimum lot size, maximum numbers of animals. We have restricted enclosures and the location. We have incorporated some flexibility, which allows a CUP to allow additional animals exceeding the maximum allowance. So, under certain circumstances, there are possibilities you could imply for a conditional use permit to allow the more animals than what is currently drafted under animal keeping. So, with that change, there are some minimal changes that have been made to Chapter 17.25070 Animal Production, which applies to TP Timber Production, GF General Forest, A1 General Agriculture, AP Agriculture Preserve, and on 10-plus acre parcels, the Rural Residential Agriculture Zone. So, currently noted, under definitions, you, most of you are familiar with the Agriculture Operations definition, which basically encompasses all things ag. The animal production provisions of that definition have been carried forward with the exception of the specific limitations or restrictions on the RA zone, and that's based on the acreage. The next one is Chapter 17.25180, which is Rural Home Industry. It now provides standards to permit the processing, fabrication, and manufacturing of goods and commodities in the resource zones as well as the RR residential zone with only approval of a conditional use permit. If you're familiar with current code, you can only apply for a conditional use permit in the RM zone. So, not only do you have to apply to rezone the parcel, well, the zoning has to come along with the CUP. So, it's really currently a two-part process with the elimination of the RM zone and rolling in these provisions back into code. It now allows property owners to simply apply for a conditional use permit. Chapter 17.25190 Special Events has undergone a few minor revisions that support the original intent that special events shall be the primary, shall be permitted as a secondary use and not the primary use of the property. Additionally, except for the AP and A1 zones, all special events now require a special events permit. Chapter 17.25210 Telecommunication Facility Standards have been revised with the primary focus on residential neighborhood compatibility by only permitting stealth facilities in residential zones with a conditional use permit. County-wide regulations now are found altogether under Subtitle IV, which include general site regulations like detached structures, access, height exemptions, right-to-farm, visibility at intersections and driveways. Setbacks have been updated to clearly identify previously recognized encroachments that were not otherwise codified in code, such as eaves and overhangs. There are new encroachment allowances such as fences, walls, mechanical equipment, and small sheds not requiring a building permit. Now, we have setbacks to streams and wetlands, and we've established agriculture buffers to minimize conflicts between agriculture operations, or, yeah, agriculture operations and non-agriculture development and uses. The lighting and illumination chapter has been updated to include dark sky regulations, and the historic and structures chapter will be replaced with the new Cultural Resource Management Ordinance our department is currently working on. Non-conforming uses and structures is now more flexible, allowing non-conforming residential uses to be enlarged and expanded without discretion. The landscaping chapter has been updated for compliance with the State Water Model Efficiency Landscaping Ordinance, promoting water conservation and efficient use of water resources. Parking has now been updated, which offers a reductions, including a 25% reduction in required parking for all uses in the HC zone, which is the new historic center zone, in addition to new off-site parking allowances, which allow the elimination of the PX overlay zone. The signs section has been updated and now includes figures and illustrations on how to measure different sign types. Peter and I recently discovered during the drafting of the Short-Term Vacation Rental Ordinance that we're working on, that signs for home occupations somehow got lost in our translation and were inadvertently left out of the signs section. So, we would, we propose actually to roll in the current regulations that are enumerated under the Business in the Home section of our current code, which reads, "A single-sided sign without illumination is permitted, provided that the sign is mounted on the residence and no larger than 12 inches in height and 24 inches in length." There are numerous chapters that have been left untouched and were simply just rolled into new code and carried forward. Those include post-disaster recovery, cannabis retailers, regulations for commercial and non-commercial cultivation of cannabis, and groundwater management. Under compliance with state and federal laws, over time, laws change. We needed to, we updated the code to eliminate conflicts between local regulations and state and federal law. Outside, outside council actually reviewed and concluded that, as drafted, the zoning code doesn't conflict anymore with state and federal laws and regulations, specifically in the, specifically in housing and laws, housing laws and regulations pertaining to accessory dwelling units, cohousing, density bonus, employee housing for farm workers, family daycares, mobile home parks, residential care facilities, and assisted living, single-room occupancy, and traditional and supportive housing. Infrastructure, communication, and natural resources laws and regulations include telecommunication facilities, wind and solar energy systems, and the Zeeberg-Worn Collier Forest Taxation Reform Act, which is known as, in our code, as the Timber Production Zone. Public and semi-public uses laws and regulations included the emergency shelters and skilled nursing facilities, and finally, we have compliance with public noticing and hearing Last and final are our general plan implementation. With the adoption of the general plan update in 2019, there were 37 measures in place intended to implement the general plan, policies relative to zoning and design. Attachment II included in your packet briefly, has a, has a list of briefly explanation of how each draft, how each draft is met, how the draft meets each implementation measure. So, if you read through that, you can see exactly what the implementation measure was, what policy it referred to, and how staff felt that we met that implementation measure. Implementation measures that have been deferred for various reasons include the Special Events Ordinance. We all know that that's going to take a little bit of special attention. We want an opportunity to bring forth all the stakeholders in the county in a study session-type situation and have a clear understanding and direction from you as to where to and how to proceed with this new ordinance, but we will be bringing that back in the near future. We are currently, as you are well aware, under the preparation of the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan. Safety design guidelines for multi-family, commercial, industrial, business parks, and community centers, land uses will take some additional thought, solar use easements as well, and we understand the need to update our ME, which is Mineral Extraction Overlay Zone, to ensure that the county is up to date with current SMRA regulations and state permitting requirements. We are currently seeking direction and possibility of hiring a consultant to help us out with that, so that is another thing that is on our, on our almost immediate to-do list. And the last one that's going to take a little bit more thought is land use development of geothermal resources. Zoning districts and use regulations kind of are overlapping in both the update as well as the map amendment, so some of this will be a little bit of a repeat when we get to the second following ordinance. But as general plan implementation, we've established two new base zones. The first one is the OS, or Open Space Zone, which is dedicated to lands to open space for purposes of managing unique, important, and significant resources. We also have now included the HC, or Historic Center Zone, which implements the HC land use category in the general plan. This is a mixed-use zone designed to reflect the scale and character of parcels in the historic communities of our county. For usability purposes, we've eliminated or proposed to eliminate two base zones. The first one is RC, which is Rural Commercial. Zones that are, the RC zone is, has found to be redundant with both C1 and C2, which are other commercial zones, that's local commercial and general commercial. All three of these zones, despite the name of Rural Commercial, are only found compatible in the same commercial land use designation. So, there's really nothing unique about the RC zone, since the uses all overlap into the other two zone districts, and they're all found to be only consistent in the same land use designation. The other elimination is of the RM, or Rural Home Industry Zone, which is intended to identify small-scale industries secondary to residential uses. We found no need for a specific zone, as previously noted. You, we now have conditional use permit provisions and use standards that have been rolled into code. So, instead of that two-part process of zoning a parcel and applying for a use permit, now you only have to apply for the conditional use permit, provided that you are in specific land use or zone, specific zone districts already. The elimination of four overlay zones. Two overlay zones regulate land use around the airport, specifically the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan area of influence. Currently, the HL Height Limitation Standards exist, as well as the AO Overflight Zone Standards. So, we propose to eliminate the HL overlay zone and simply roll those standards into the AO overlay, and now we're going to rezone all of those parcels within that area of influence from HL to AO. And during that exercise, we also discovered that there was some really old zoning AAO that no longer exists, so we're going to clean that up as well. Two other zones that were, overlay zones that we're proposing to eliminate is the MHP, which is Mobile Home Park, and PX, which is the off-site parking combining zone. So, just like the RM zone, we didn't see that there was any need to rezone parcels specific for these reasons. We've included standards and CUP provisions in code to address all of those things. We have a zone that is a specified hazardous waste facilities overlay zone, which is, incorporates requirements additionally contained within the County Hazardous Waste Management Plan. There's really no need for two plans to regulate the same thing, and come to find out, there are absolutely zero parcels zoned with the overlay to start with. So, we're eliminating that overlay zone entirely, and all of those regulations are already rolled into the Hazardous Waste Management Plan, so they can handle their own standards. Revised overlay zones is the, is the PD. Plan development currently serves two purposes in current code. The first one is the planned unit development, second is design review. In 2018, we established the DR Design Review Overlay Zone, which applies to areas where design review standards have been adopted. Currently, as you are probably aware, the only adopted standards in the county right now are for the community of McCollumie Hill. The 2019 general plan rescinded prior community plans, which established community, and in place have established community plan areas. This is an important detail, as the Plan Development Overlay Zone was initially applied in community plan areas, and that was for the purpose of design review. The zoning code has been updated to separate out the two purposes and establish the Plan Development Overlay as a true planned unit development zone. In future, community areas that adopt design standards will be zoned with the DR Overlay Zone, which reflects the fact that there are design standards that now apply to that So, under SEQA, the county certified a program EIR in 2019 with the approval of the general plan. This update, including the code and map amendments, is a later activity under SEQA, being that, being that what is proposed is a project within the scope of the program EIR. No additional or supplemental analysis is required under SEQA. So, with that, I do have a Planning Commission recommendation. As Peter has previously noted, they have spent a considerable amount of time reading and discussing and taking in community input and drafting this update, really to capture the character of Calaveras County. And they have presented this draft to you with the recommendation that you accept it and adopt it, and if you like, we can go through just a real quick little tutorial, unless you think that you feel really comfortable with how the code is and how to read it. Otherwise, we can go through it really quick.
Appetite? Does anybody want to do a tutorial?
I think maybe for the public.
Sure.
I think maybe for the public, people in the rooms, do they understand it? Go through it real quick.
Yeah. Go for it, Gina.
It's exciting. At least to us.
Us zoning nerds.
I know.
Not geeks, nerds.
Not geeks. Thank you. Okay. So, I think the main, the main focus should be on, let's see if I can actually make this bigger. Can you guys read that? We are actually, I'm starting on a land use table, page 18, starting with kind of an overview of the land use table. So, this is a great new little feature. We absolutely love it. If you'll notice on the, so this table is, this land use table actually is, I'm sorry, what?
Can you do a zoom out a little?
Zoom in? Yeah. How do I make it bigger? It starts on page 18. How do I make this bigger? Oh.
You might get rid of that navigation panel, too.
I like it. Actually, I need it. Otherwise, I'll be here forever. Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. So, how to use the land use table? If you'll notice over here on the left-hand side, we have, we have our land use classifications. These are our new little classifications that we have created with, with alike uses. So, these are categories, starting with residential uses. So, all of the uses enumerated under the title residential are all residential uses that are found to be consistent with these, with these zonings. So, this happens to be the resource zones table. So, if you'll notice across the top here, the GF is a reference to General Forest, and then you have TP, which is Timber Production, and then A1, General Agriculture. AP is our Agriculture Preserve Zone, and then finally, RA, which is our Residential Ag Zone. So, all of the uses are enumerated with either a P- So all of the uses are enumerated with either a P for permitted, an A for administrative, or a C for conditional use. And then simply, if you have a dash, that just simply means that the use is not allowed. Over on the right-hand side, you'll see additional regulations. So these, these additional regulations could simply be stated, just as this, under family daycare, where these uses are permitted, but must be located within an existing residential unit. So that is a, an additional regulation pertaining to the, the use of a family daycare. So where all of these references to other section numbers, such as this top one, where it says C section 17.25040, accessory dwelling units, we will have all of these chapters and other references hyperlinked. And so if you're reading through this, this table, and you want to, you want to build an accessory dwelling unit, but you want to realize what exactly are the additional regulations, you could simply then click on the 17.25040, and it will automatically take you to that section in the code. Very nice feature. So if we roll down under, here's another example, under public and semi-public uses for a cemetery, you'll, you'll see that it is a conditional use in the GF zone. In addition, it is an administrative use in the A1 zone, but we have a little 1 in, as a parentheses. So if you scroll down to the end of the table, those special limitations are all noted here. And so the 1 is, is providing you with some additional restrictions. In the A1 and AP zone, private burial plots used solely for the internment of the property owner and members of the household are allowed, subject to an administrative use permit. So that kind of gives you an idea of how to use the tables. Very helpful. Under each one of the zone districts, we have listed the development standards, which provide you with maximum density, minimum parcel size, height requirements, setbacks, et cetera. All of these are enumerated under each different set of, of zone districts. So very excited about that. Gives you an opportunity to compare the, the different zone districts at the same time. We're really excited to get using this section. So if we just scroll down to give you an idea, if you're looking at the residential uses under land use classifications, and you're wondering, what in the world does cohousing mean? If you go down to the land use classification section, which is, which is right here, chapter 17.42, you'll see all of the residential housing types are all defined. Cohousing happens to be developments containing clusters of small homes and multi-unit dwelling units, generally near services, and including at least one common building where residences can meet, eat, and gather. So we no longer have this, you know, misunderstanding of what specific uses are. Everything is now defined. Everything has a category. Just below this, you'll find definitions of other terms throughout the entire code. And those are all in alphabetical order, very easy to find. So again, everything is defined, everything is enumerated somewhere. Currently, all of our performance standards are kind of found all over the place in code. You'll find them enumerated under, under the specific base zones, and then you'll find them in a standalone chapter. And so now we've incorporated all of those, what used to be performance standards, under the countywide regulations. And those are actually found up here in the earlier portion of the code. Common procedures. So it's, it's really just organized in a way that is much easier to use, a lot easier to find things. Like I said, now everything is defined. You can clearly see what the additional requirements mean. And we clearly enumerate and outline procedures, process, responsibilities, where before, it was rather difficult, because we had things kind of scattered all over the code. So we're really excited about it. I hope you guys found that it was really easy to navigate. If you have any specific questions about it, anything in the presentation, anything that we haven't previously talked about, I suppose this is probably the time.
Questions from the board? Sorry? Questions from the board at this time?
I'll wait.
All right. Public comment. I'm going to, for everybody here, we're going to limit it to three minutes. You'll have a red light that'll blink in front of you, or yellow and then red. I'm going to hold everybody to three minutes, and I hope you understand it allows us to keep this meeting moving forward, and we've done a lot of public comment historically on this, so hopefully we'll see what we've got. So without further ado, public comment. Ma'am, come on up, you've got three minutes.
Good morning. My name is. I live in Calaveras County, District 2 of country, and I'm a supporter of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Thanks for the opportunity to share comments on the zoning ordinance update. Thank you for the section on mixed-use development, accommodating both residential and commercial uses in buildings and commercial zones. Section 17.06.030 describes where residential units shall be located, establishes the ratio of commercial to residential use, and limits the square footage of detached, single dwelling units. This section does a great job providing economic benefit for small businesses, as well as opportunities for affordable housing. Supporting mixed use, uses creates more diverse economic opportunities, especially for small businesses. By outlining specific limitations, this section provides straightforward guidelines to streamline the process of, for applicants and the county. Please keep this section in the zoning update. Thank you for including a new illumination ordinance. Section 17.16.100 describes the purpose and intent of the ordinance, outlines clear objectives, and sets the standards for the types of exterior lighting that are allowed. By setting maximum light levels at property lines, it provides a measurable and enforceable requirement. This section does an outstanding job, establishing clear, specific, and enforceable standards to meet the stated objectives. Please also keep this section in the zoning update. Thank you for clarifying provisions for home occupations and rural home industries. Section 17.25.140 and 1.80, I'm sorry, point 1, yeah. Describe the standard for the location, development, and operation of home occupations and rural home industries. It establishes the need for business license, and sets limitations, including restrictions on traffic, parking, and outdoor storage, which protect residential neighborhoods from the potential negative impacts of home occupations. The specific regulations for cottage food preparations protects public health and safety while supporting small businesses. I'm not going to get through all this, but please keep this section in the zoning ordinance. And section 17.25.210 establishes a clear definition of what qualifies as a telecommunications facility. It sets quantifiable standards and encourages stealth facilities and co-location facilities. By requiring a conditional use permit with certain zoning categories, the counties afforded the opportunity, the opportunity in place, to place additional conditions on the project, and the community is afforded the opportunity to have input.
Thank you. I know, I know it goes fast.
Please include.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comments.
Okay. Well, I thank you for the effort so far, and I just hope you consider these, include them in the update.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Tom Pearl. I live in District 1, and I'm reading a statement of support for the Planning Commission recommended Calaveras County zoning code update. And this comes from myvalleysprings.com. So the update will help clarify county code for landowners, help minimize impacts, and help reduce complaints and misunderstandings, especially in residential zones. We especially support the revised code sections below, and ask for your support of them. Number one, animal keeping, chapter 1725060. The new minimum acreage requirement and animal limit per acre is necessary to maintain a reasonable capacity to keep animals and to avoid nuisance complaints in residential zones. Number two, telecommunications facilities, chapter 1725210. These revised standards and updated permit requirements for telecommunications facilities will help reduce new cell tower impacts, controversies, and conflicts in residential areas. Number three, setbacks, chapter 1716080. New setbacks for stream and wetlands and new agricultural buffers are needed, and will help minimize conflicts and impacts. Number four, lighting and illumination, chapter 1716100. Dark sky lighting standards have been needed and supported in Calaveras for decades, at least since 2009. These new standards are necessary to minimize light pollution, glare, and light trespass from new development, and protect our dark skies. And the planning commissioners, planning staff, and consultant have worked diligently over the past year and a half on this update, and please support their good work and support the county code ordinance update. Thank you. This is a printed copy.
Do you have, I think you have all of the printed copies?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
Hello. My name is Travis Slafman, and I am resident of 3779 Northwood Drive, currently zoned RCPD. And I am in opposition to the portion of this zoning update that proposes to eliminate rural commercial properties altogether. My opposition comes from, one, the potential of the value of my property to decline with this new zoning, because of it possibly becoming more difficult for your average citizens to acquire lending from a bank and buy a house. I'm familiar with this concept, because as a freelance worker, it was difficult for me to get a home loan, and home loans have changed over the years. They used to give them away like hotcakes, and now they're a little bit more touchy in getting them. And when I went to go get a property loan for a place in downtown Angels Camp, which was zoned commercially, I was unable to get lending for that. I was, however, able to get lending for my rural, commercially zoned. I am naive to a lot of the concepts, considering zoning, and not aware of all, all of the regulations, but I reached out to people that I respect and admire, one of them being my real estate agent, Janet Kuslich, which I wrote to her, in your professional opinion, do you think in Calaveras County, a house on a rural, commercially zoned property is easier to get lending than a C1 zone property? And she replied, it is easier to get a residential loan on a house in RC than in C1 in Calaveras, because of, in RC, a single-family residence is one of the permitted uses. In C1, a single-family residence requires a conditional use permit, which is technically temporary and could be revoked. Residential loans on C1 are possible if they are grandfathered in, but require more info from the county to determine if it will work. This is what the zoning code says. This may be part of this is possibly getting updated, I'm not sure about that, but that's a concern of mine. The other concern was sort of rumors, and people saying, well, it's going to be really difficult to rebuild on a property in the event of a disaster. My neighborhood was Northwood Drive in the 90s. There was a huge fire that burnt down, I think, 14 homes in my neighborhood. The potential for that to happen is real. We are in an immensely dangerous area, and to make it more difficult for me to build again on my property in the event of a disaster is a nightmare. It's very concerning to me. It scares me for a lot of reasons. In that event, I reached out to my friend Michaela Richardson, who has been working on loans for over 20 years. She was the one that, when she worked with, with Wells Fargo, now she's out on her own, providing a lending. She said, what she said was, Travis, the simple answer is, it, zone commercially, you will need a rebuild letter from the county or city stating that if the dwelling burnt down, you would allow you to rebuild a residential property. Perhaps some of that is changing as well, too, but the whole thing for me is, who does this benefit, changing all the rural and commercial? There's only 37 to 38 of them.
Sir?
Yes. Are we at my, of our mind?
It was fast.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marty, come on down.
Let's make a deal. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Marty Crane. I live in Calaveras County, and I'm a longtime supporter of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Thank you for the opportunity to share my comments on the zoning ordinance update. In general, thank you for the time and work spent by staff, consultants, and the Planning Commission drafting and refining this code. It will serve to benefit the residents of Calaveras County for years to come. Thank you for the graphics and the list of examples that helped to clarify the words of the code. Thank you for so many accurate definitions, all in one place. This helps make the code accessible to the general public that it's meant to serve. It provides clarity and attempts to avoid subjectivity. No, we didn't get everything we wanted. Nevertheless, we encourage the county to approve the text of the zoning ordinance. It is equally important to properly adopt additional code provisions to implement the rest of the general plan and address urgent local needs. It is especially critical to address open space issues across the vast majority of the county's jurisdiction. These issues include wildfire safety, agricultural land conservation, and habitat conservation, and must be addressed before approving projects that increase the intensity of uses on open spaced lands, or to convert agricultural lands to non-agricultural uses. The wildfire and conservation conditions on the landscape are degrading as we speak. Your time to avoid the loss of lives and property to wildfires, or to avoid the economic disruption of development injunctions, is running out. This is not the time for delay. This is a time screaming out for prompt action. Thank you again for your efforts and for considering my comments. Again, I'm Marty.
Thanks, Marty.
And I have a copy for you.
Any public comments? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board.
We have online.
I'm sorry? Do we have, we have questions online? One moment.
Okay. Sorry. Yes, we have Mr. Infuzio.
Thank you. Tom, are you on there?
Tom and Pacino, Calaveras Planning Coalition.
Thank you.
I have four things to say, and only three minutes to say them, so I will go a little fast. Number one, thank you. Thank you to the hard-working people who made it possible for the Board of Supervisors to hole this ZOU putt today. Vina Catan and Martha Miller teed up the draft ZOU, Gabriel Elliott, Deputy County Counsel, and the Planning Commission drove it down the fairway. Peter Maurer chipped it onto the green. Thank you all. Number two, this is the general plan implementation the board asked for back in March. Then the Board of Supervisors, especially Supervisor Gary Mendy, asked the planning department to step up the pace of general plan implementation. They have done that. As you know, the general plan includes over 200 implementation measures. To date, the planning department has been bringing you measures to implement, one at a time. That changes today. The ZOU before you implements over 25 general plan measures. The draft plan for greenhouse gas reduction you saw back in November of 2023 would also implement 25 general plan measures. The draft Coppropolis Community Plan you saw in November 23 expresses the county's desire to implement over 100 general plan measures in Coppropolis. If all goes well, you should adopt those two documents before the end of this year. Please encourage the planning department and the planning commission to keep those general plan implementations. general plan implementation provisions in those draft plans. Number three, we at the CPC will try to do what you cannot. Throughout the ZOU process, the CPC requests, made requests that the planning department and the Planning Commission simply couldn't accommodate. Thus, this ZOU represents the county doing what it can. We at the CPC will try to fill the gaps by doing what you cannot. We at the CPC will provide information on our website to help land buyers complete their due diligence when seeking property to develop. We at the CPC will distribute information to help people plan safe buyright special events. Thank you to the county for taking on the challenges you can and for clarifying for the CPC the challenges that remain for us. Number four, please keep up the good work. Next year, you have a state mandated update of the open space element of the general plan. In addition, the state has still funding available for the county to use preparing a natural communities conservation plan. It's time to apply for those funds and start the NCCP process. Also, it's the Highway 4 corridors turn to get community plans and/or design review guidelines. Let's do it. Finally, the planning department has singled out some controversial zoning items desperately in need of public workshops and board direction, including short-term rentals and wedding events. Please give the planning department the direction it needs to complete these important tasks. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Other, other comments online?
I'd just like to remind our online callers, if they would like to make a comment, that they need to raise their hands so we are aware that they would like to make that comment. As of right now, I do not see any raised hands.
Thank you. Other questions before I close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action from the board?
Remember, we have two parts. So, the second...
Yeah, that's, I think, the question.
So, the second, second part, we are being, yeah, we'll address the map amendments in the second ordinance.
Questions? Okay, I am closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the board for action.
I have one thing I'd like to at least have brought up and maybe brought back. There's a lot of, in my district, in the west end of the county, there's a lot of private shooting ranges that are cropping up on small acreages. And, and there's no regulations for it. They have some setback regulations that the sheriff holds into, but a lot of them are going on. They bring their friends up from wherever, and they spend all weekend shooting out there. And I don't, I think we need at least some regulation, so I'd like to at least add to the board, ask staff to bring that back to us, look at it, come up with some regulations, and then bring it back, at least to the Planning Commission and then to the Planning Commission and to the board.
Excuse me, sir. No, ma'am. No, sir.
What, what, what those, what those look like? I, I don't know, but I do think maybe we, we need at least a lot of things with setbacks and the direction, and maybe the times or whatever, that some type of regulations on it, because right now, there's not a whole lot.
Yeah, there's some provisions in Title IX, but, you know, that's pretty much what the sheriff's department is, is, you know, they, they handle that. But certainly, if you'd like us to bring something back, we can add it to the list and bring it back as quickly as we can.
Yeah, I would, excuse me, just to echo Mr. Mar, Supervisor Toffenelli, we do address shooting on private land in a separate chapter of county code, so it's going to require amendments to that to make those changes.
The only thing that I know that addresses commercial shooting...
We have provisions for...
Privately owned.
Which is part of the problem, they're not commercial.
There's provisions addressing shooting on privately owned land, some restrictions fairly limited in Chapter 9.12, which is from 1977, so that's going to require an update as well to make any changes. But staff can certainly bring back amendments.
We'll work with the sheriff's office and bring back something for you to discuss.
Yeah, that's fine.
You want to make a motion? I should note that Supervisor Toffer has sent me a text that he is ill today.
I have one other question on the special events coming back for adoption. Do you have any timeframe? Is that how soon that's going to come back?
I'm sorry, what, what specific ordinance or special events?
Yeah, special.
Well, we don't have an ordinance yet, and I think what we really need is a study session to get some clear direction of how we want to handle that, look at all the, sort of as we did with the cannabis ordinance, have sort of a question and answer, like, okay, how do you want to handle this issue? How do you want to handle this issue? Before we start drafting up a lot of language, it may not go in the direction that you want, so I would propose that we schedule a study session in the near future, within the next month or so, so that we can have that discussion and get going on that ordinance. And one of the things we're going to do at the end of this meeting is, Peter's got a couple of questions, so we set priorities for their next phase. Is there a motion or a question? Please.
Got a couple of questions. Really quickly, the difference between PD and DR is, was sketchy to me, and actually listening to Gina talk today, I think it's on page 59, it just, that clause just seemed really open-ended as far as other areas identified by the Board of Supervisors where the community concurrents design review standards have been developed and adopted with community input. So, that's going forward. There isn't anything, my understanding is, there isn't anything on the books at the moment beyond McColty Hill.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, when we adopted that ordinance back in, I think, 2018 perhaps, this was something that was driven by the community of McColty Hill. They really wanted to have their design standards, which had been adopted when there was McColty Hill, the original McColty Hill community plan, was carried over into the community planning provisions of the new general plan. And there was some concern that the county would just impose design standards on different communities, and that's not the intent here. It's as the communities work together, we're working on a Coppropolis community plan right now. I intend to, to bring up Arnold as one of the next community plans that we should be working on. I know that there are a number of people that would love to see design standards in the community of Arnold. And so, as that happens, we want to, we want to be able to adopt standards that are implementable at the staff level on a ministerial approach rather than go through the rather lengthy and costly plan development process that we have now, and we don't really have any standards. So, it's sort of like, well, what do you think it should be? What's your favorite color? You know, that, that kind of question that, you know, we can't tell an applicant, say, here is what the community wants to see unless we have adopted design standards. So, it would be a process that we'd go through, working with the community, to come up, what do you want your community to look like? What kind of architectural standards, details that you would want to see incorporated into any new, new construction? Adopt those standards and then identify which parcels those standards would apply to. Then we would apply the design review overlay to that, and it would be a staff level review rather than going through the Planning Commission as the plan development is. We would still utilize the plan development for more creative development processes, you know, condominium project is, but you often see a commercial plan development where they're doing some creative land use design characteristics that don't quite fit into the standard zoning. And so, that would be the purpose of, of plan development, is to look at the whole of a project, how's it all going to fit together? How are we going to sort of modify some of our standards so that this project will work internally as well as fit into the community as well? So, that's sort of our approach.
I'd also, thank you very much, Peter. I'd also like to address Mr. Schlaafman's question regarding disaster and removal of the RC unit. If, if a person's house was to burn down, they have, my understanding is, they would have to go and ask the county to get permitted to rebuild it. Is that correct? It's not an automatic thing?
So, no, it, it is automatic. They have a year to pull a permit. There are provisions in the non-conforming use provisions of the code as well as the post-disaster recovery that says you have the right to rebuild your home. We've also modified the non-conforming use provisions for, specifically for residences in commercial zone. We have a lot of areas in all of our communities that are zone commercial but have a house on it. And right now, under the current code, you can't do anything to that house without going through a use permit to modify it. The purpose of non-conforming use provisions typically is where you have a more intrusive use, a commercial use in a residential zone, it's been there for a long time, zoning was adopted, it says that commercial use can stay, but it can't expand, not going through a use permit because it's a more intense use. Here, we have a less intense use, and it doesn't really make sense to restrict those people from enjoying their property, enjoying their home, doing an addition, adding a garage. So, we've loosened up the requirements for use of residential structures in commercial zones so that you can do all those things without having to go through a special permit process. So, I'm, between that and the provisions for, you know, for post-disaster recovery, someone who has a home that might be lost in a disaster would be able to rebuild. And, you know, after the beat fire, there were so many delays that were caused because of, you know, insurance, insurance delays, that that one year, we extended that many times, as long as people were working towards getting a permit. It wasn't something that we said, oh, sorry, too late, you can't do it. No one wants to do that to anyone who's lost their home in a disaster. So, the building department and planning were very flexible in trying to make sure that people did have a disaster, were able to move on with their life and continue and go back to what they had before.
Correct. Thank you, Peter. Thank you.
I am looking for a motion.
I'll move this item.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Habberty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post carries four, zero, one absent. Thank you. Thank you. Item number two.
Item two, ordinance of planning, find project within the scope of the general plan, EIR, for purposes of sequo, conduct a public hearing, adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of 2087 parcels in the county as described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, and authorize summary publication and a brief property description.
I am opening a public hearing. Gina or Peter, is everyone leading?
Okay, part two. The zoning amendment map. So, resulting from all the changes that we just outlined in part one, we have whittled down the list of parcels to be rezoned in the county to 2087. Initially, I know that still sounds like a very large number. Initially, we had close to 5,000 parcels. So, over the time that we were working through the Planning Commission review and discussion, changes were made and decisions were made to kind of eliminate initial thoughts about, primarily, it was the X overlay zone. We had initially thought that we wanted to eliminate it throughout the process, then we realized that maybe that's not really what we wanted to do, took a step back and eliminated our initial intent and decided to keep it into code. So, that number was changing, and so we ended up with a total of 2,087 parcels. And, and that results from the elimination of the two base zones and the three overlay zones as previously described, in addition to the modification to the PD overlay. So, some of this might be a little redundant, as I've already kind of concluded most of this in the previous presentation, but we'll just quickly go through some more details here. Zoning amendments also include a cleanup effort to rezone parcels that were zoned with the MH overlay, which is mobile home overlay zone. That was eliminated from code about 30, 35 years ago, but we never did a cleanup zoning amendment, and so as a result, we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,200 parcels plus that are still zoned with an MH overlay. So, we want to clean that up and get rid of those. The other is to rezone parcels that are currently still zoned unclassified in highway service. If you remember, post 2019 general plan update, the planning department came behind that with a master zoning amendment that we cleaned up all the non-conforming zoning, and we eliminated all of the unclassified and highway service interim zones in the county. Through this exercise of identifying all of these parcels that were rezoning today, we discovered there were two, a couple loose stragglers, so we rolled those into this as well. I think that's about two parcels. In addition, we have about 28 parcels in San Andres that we're proposing to, to rezone, and I'll get into that in just a minute. The elimination of the two base zones as previously described is RC. There are a total of 37 parcels to be rezoned to zone districts consistent with the general plan land use designation. Most of those are going to either C1 or C2. We took into consideration the land use and adjoining land use and zoning when trying to figure out what these parcels should be zoned. Like I said, the majority of them are being zoned either C1 or C2. There are a couple parcels that are not proposed to be zoned C1 or C2, and that is because the underlying land use designation was not commercial. So, the first one is, is property owned by Sutton in Vallecito. The parcel has a rural residential land use designation. Did some research, there's no notable business on site, and it appears to simply be residential accessory structures and use, so we're proposing to zone that parcel rural residential. The other is, is a parcel that is best known as the Spence Ranch Feed and Supply, located off of Highway 49, just outside of Angels Camp. Currently, it is an 18.79 acre parcel that is all designated with a natural resource land use designation and currently with a mixed zone of A1ME, which is general agriculture with mineral extraction overlay and RC rural commercial. So, back in the day, the, the store itself, without going into great detail, there was a zoning amendment that was done and created a split zoning. So, they literally drew out a 300 by 500 rectangle on a map and said, "This is the store, and we're going to zone this RC." And that was done, I believe, back in the '80s. So, so that parcel's been zoned RC ever since. I think when we were, when we went through the general plan update, and it might be better if I just go to the map and show you exactly what I'm talking about. So, this is kind of like a misrepresentation because the GIS map is inaccurate, so all of this pink-red color is not the depiction of the legal parcel. They've subsequently gone in since this map, and they've done a record of survey, so this is not a clear depiction of the size of the parcel in question. So, if you'll notice, these two little squares here, if we go to the land use map, you'll see that these are commercial. Well, initially, when we did the general plan map, we were thinking without, well, it's, it's basically our, we were initially thinking that this parcel here was, in fact, the site of the store itself. And so, I think when the land use was applied to this parcel, not recognizing that the store was not, in fact, a separate legal parcel, and thinking that, in fact, this was the store site, and it was already, we designated it commercial and designated the rest of the property that is owned by the Spence family with a resource land use designation. So, initially, when I was going through the exercise of identifying, you know, the parcels that are zoned RC, when identifying, trying to figure out what to rezone the parcels to, with the fact that these, this parcel had an underlying land use designation of re... resource, natural resource, it wasn't compatible with a commercial zone, and recognizing that the store was on an 18 acre parcel with another use that was already zoned A1ME, the proposal was to actually zone the entire parcel A1ME, which then would create a nonconforming use of the commercial building. Now, they could in fact continue the use, it runs with the land, we're not taking it away, just like any other nonconforming use, but it does have some other results that, you know, could be problematic in the future. I think the family is here that wants to, you know, speak on their own behalf, but the staff is, is more than willing to try to figure out a way to, to make this more of a, you know, like-for-like conforming use with the zoning. How you want us to proceed is entirely up to you, but I'm sure that we could probably put our heads together and make this work.
If I could jump in here for a minute. The problem we have right now is, it's sort of a catch 22. We can't fix the zoning without a general plan amendment, and we can't do a general plan amendment because it's not, you know, so I think we have to sort of take this one out and fix it at a subsequent hearing. But we can't really keep the RC zoning in place because we're eliminating it. So what I would propose at this point is we proceed with the map amendment with the understanding that we'll be bringing something back to you to fix this immediately. We need to do a little more time and do the proper notice of it. So I didn't have a chance to talk to the Spences about that as far as the dilemma that we're facing procedurally here today, but our intent is to, it's, sure, we're doing the right thing, but, you know, look, in my recollection, being the one that drew that map, was that I thought that that site, which is actually the suburban propane business, was where the Spence Ranch was. So when I mapped it, I just made the assumption that included the Spence Ranch supply store. So we can't actually fix it today because of those requirements and all that, but we will fix it and by commitment to that.
So the other elimination of base zone is, is RM rural home industry, which again is intended to identify small scale industries secondary to residential uses. Again, we found no need to have a specific zone when we can roll in provisions to allow a use permit. Why make it a two-step process when we can simply just jump to a use permit and accomplish the same goals? There are 12 parcels currently zoned RM in the county. 11 of those, once upon a time, had approved conditional use permits for small rural home industries. Out of those 11 approved use permits, only two are valid today. We've confirmed and vetted each one of those. Those two are still in operation and will be allowed to continue as conditional use permits run with the land. So our proposal is to zone all of those parcels to a zone that is consistent with the underlying land use designation, most of which actually ended up to be rural residential. The elimination of the four overlay zones are described as follows. Two overlay zones regulate the land use around the airport as previously discussed. We have an airport land use compatibility plan that regulates all of the area defined as an area of influence surrounding the airport. Back when the airport land use compatibility plan was adopted in 2010, I think, we had in place at the time an airport special plan. The airport special plan then was rescinded when we adopted the new plan. What we didn't realize until we got into identifying these parcels for relative to HL overlay and AO, is that when we adopted the airport land use compatibility plan, it actually expanded the area of influence from the previous plan. And those parcels that were outside of the previous plans but now encumbered in that other area were never rezoned. And so we've identified all of the properties within the current airport overflight, or the current airport land use area of influence, and we propose to zone all of those parcels with an AO overlay. So it not only encumbered the parcels that were being rezoned HL to AO, but we also captured additional parcels that were never zoned to begin with, that still should, that still apply. They still are affected by the airport plan, and so it's appropriate for us to capture those and, and zone those appropriately as well. So those are included in that zoning, in this zoning amendment. That, that actually total is about roughly 268 parcels within that area of influence. Out of that, I identified probably 157 of those parcels that were not previously zoned. So that was a considerable number. The MHP or mobile home combining zone, park combining zone, there's a total of six parcels with the PX overlay zone, I counted approximately seven. And just like the RM zone, there's really no need to have a two-part process, so we're proposing to eliminate those zones, and we've rolled in standards and provisions for CUP into code to address those issues. As we also previously discussed, the changes that we've made to the PD overlay, so again, I think that totals approximately 428 parcels that are proposed to be rezoned simply to reflect the base zone, eliminating the PD overlay because they were identified as parcels that were zoned PD for purpose of design review. Other parcels to be rezoned, there's a group of 29 parcels in San Andreas. So this grouping of, of parcels right here, this happens to be the elementary school, this is Lewis Avenue, Main Street, Foothill, Foothill Court, and Foothill Trail. These parcels were zoned R2-14,300 square feet. That's a reference to square feet per dwelling unit. 11 of those parcels happen to be located off of Foothill Terrace, in the Foothill Terrace subdivision, which is located here. This is a subdivision that is all basically shovel-ready. All the infrastructure is there, it's ready, all you've got to do is get a building permit and start construction. For some reason, this was the only area within the San Andreas community plan that was identified specifically as R2, and was applied the limitation of the square footage per dwelling unit. Since we've eliminated the community plans, previous community plans that were all adopted back in the 80s, with the new general plan, community areas, there's really no need at this point to have the further restriction of the square footage. So for consistency with the general plan, the, the R2 zone is a residential medium density zoning, and it is consistent in, with the land use designation of residential medium density, which actually allows right now 12, six to 12 dwelling units per acre. So if we eliminate the, the restriction of 14,300 square feet, then it essentially doubles the allowable density in this, on these parcels. So there are some undeveloped parcels, the majority of this, of the site is developed, but there is still a lot of undeveloped land. It's in public water and public sewer, it's close proximity to the school, makes this area just a prime candidate for residential uses. We would like to maximize that potential residential use, and inconsistency with the general plan, specifically housing element H1D, which requires the zoning to reflect minimum density standards in the general plan, we felt that this was a good grouping of parcels that have the potential to be rezoned, and appropriate to do so within this action. Additional cleanup, as we previously discussed, are the two highway service and unclassified parcels, and then the, of course, the MH overlay zone, which encumbers 1,264 parcels in the county that are currently zoned with a zone, overlay zone that doesn't mean anything because it's gone. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just to go back to the, those parcels in, here in San Andreas, we're not changing the underlying zoning, we're just eliminating the size limitation that was imposed back in the 80s at some point in time. So the underlying zoning staying the same, R2, the uses are the same, it just removes that restriction that would not allow us to, you know, take, take advantage of the infrastructure that Gina pointed out, and the proximity of the schools and town we're doing the shopping, so it's a prime location for workforce housing and, you know, allow more flexibility for development of those sites.
Right.
Basically, they can go to the chart, and everything on the chart, turn off restrictions.
Right.
Exactly. And as time goes on, we would like to take a look at other areas in the county that have applied, you know, these density restrictions based on prior community plans. It was kind of inappropriate for us, we didn't really have time to go through the entire county, but we would like to start taking a look at those and analyzing each, you know, each cluster of parcels and, and probably bring those to you incrementally sometime in the near future, just to try to shore everything up with the general plan and make sure that we don't have any other stumbling blocks for folks coming forward with projects.
I think I need to repeat my question because Susan's looking at me, I didn't have my microphone on when I asked the question about, they can now just go to the chart and go R2, and they're, they're, they're open to everything that they can do in R2.
Exactly. So if you go to the chart and you look at the development standards in the R2 zone, you'll see that they are, they are basically reflecting the general plan densities, and so to make sure that there's consistency between zoning and the general plan, like I said, we would like to go through the exercise of eventually eliminating all of these. We just don't have the opportunity to do it all at once, and so we're going to propose to bring them to you individually.
Thank you.
So with that, that kind of wraps up all of our proposed zone changes to reflect the changes in the map, and then in the additional cleanup items that we've enumerated. So if you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Other questions?
I have a question. Have all these property owners that were changing their zone, have they been notified?
Yes, so.
Have any of the owners been notified?
They've been notified multiple times. So back in October, per your request, we initially sent out over 4,000 notifications to landowners that were being, that their properties were proposed to be changed. We fielded numerous phone calls, few counter people, but all in all, there really wasn't a lot of reaction, and maybe that's just because we did a really good job of cross-referencing all the resources. Maybe people were, you know, self-help. But all in all, I would say there were very few concerns. Initially, one of the primary concerns that was noted was the RC, or the RM zone. You know, folks were a little confused with the RM zone, they thought that there was further entitlements that were granted through the zoning itself, when, when we explained that no, that really weren't any at all, because there were no enumerated permitted uses other than a single-family residence. You had to get a use permit for anything in, in that zone. And so once they understood how the zone district worked and, and the provisions that were in place to go forward, everyone seemed to be fine with, with the elimination of the zone district. And I just lost my train of thought. So.
Other notification.
Huh?
Other notification.
Oh, other notification, that's right. So prior to the last planning commission hearing where they adopted the, the final draft document, we had sent out another notice. So that was notice number two. That was a much scaled back list because of all the changes that we had made prior to that. So we scaled the notification list back to, to the, pretty much the list that we also sent out notification prior to this meeting. So three separate notifications, they changed slightly. The big list was in the initial notice back in October, a much narrower list had, had eliminated a lot of parcels, and then the final list that we have before you today.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, it's a public hearing, there's a public comment on this item. I have the same rules, three minutes. I appreciate you guys watching the light, so I don't have to cut any way off. Marty, you get to kick us off.
So I can't help but wonder, okay, we spent, a lot of us put our lives on hold and met over and over and over again throughout the whole county to develop our community plans. And then, much to our dismay, the board before you, some of you, made the decision to eliminate those and just take the things out of those plans that applied to all over the counties, and left out all the details that, the voices of the community. So those voices are gone. So, and every time we amend it, somebody looks at, somebody not us, looks at these words and says, well, we don't need that, we don't need that. Oh, things have changed. Well, you know, the, the parcels that you're talking about that were designated a certain size, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the right words, many, many years ago, you're saying it's not relevant, but the people back then came together and made the decision, for whatever reason, for the future of their community, and now, because they're dead, it's gone. It's not relevant anymore. And, and if they're not dead, they probably don't have the ability to step up and go toe-to-toe again and pull everyone together to do this. So it always bothers me when we chip away at the voices of the community, because we always come up with something different when we start editing other people's thoughts. And then, ah, sorry, and then also, when we, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry, but it bothers me when we do that, because now, I mean, I'm not dead yet, but I'm not going to get back here and go toe-to-toe and carry the torch. So our community plans are gone. They're somewhere, somebody has them, but we don't want to attach them so that people moving here might see what the people in that community would appreciate. And if I was opening a business in a community, I'd want to know that, because you want your business to be successful, and you want the public to go, hey, they're not going to like my pink and purple. like my pink and purple," right? Or, "They want me to blend in." I think a lot of times, people really wouldn't mind what business is there, as long as it looks like it fits in. And that takes us to the design standards. We only have design standards for two or three communities in the county, and at the planning commission, I asked them to please keep the plan development process in place until the communities get the chance to work with their supervisors to design those, which could take a couple of years.
Thank you.
But beg nor me. So, please.
Other public comment?
Hi, I'm Patty Spence of Spence Ranch Feed and Supply. And Gina, pretty much she did. She said what she needed to, and thank you guys for recognizing that, you know, the mistake was made thinking that the propane was for us, and it's not. But if you do decide to put us back to the A1ME, you're really going to make things. First of all, no other type of any... of a business could ever be done on that parcel because you're going to grandfather the feed store again, and it would always have to be a feed store. I know it's been said the store's going to be able to continue as it is because it's grandfathered, but what if we no longer wanted to be a feed store? My kids have gone other ways. I may not have somebody to run it. What if I needed to sell it in the future? It's going to be limited. Second of all, in order for the business to operate on that A1 zone parcel, it says there's an administrative use permit. That means, as the gentleman earlier was saying, we operate day by day. Administrative use permits are revocable at any time. The third point is it could financially affect the business. No bank wants to make a business commercial loan on something that is operating on a revocable permit. A1 zoning would tie our hands from ever doing anything in the future. I mean, we took the time, we tried to clean things up because, as you saw, that line goes right through the middle of the feed store. So we took our time, we got our lot line adjustment. The 300 by 500 doesn't work because that lot is no longer to that. It would run over on the other side. Propane is C2. I know that you are redoing the Humane Society. They're going to be a C1. Somehow, we need to come up with some type of an agreement or something here that we need to get done. I know the original mapping and the general plan changes, you guys made those prior to this lot line adjustment. So I'm hoping that you will, you know, allow us to work with the planning department and try to come up with something because I work too hard. We've almost been with that store for almost 50 years, and, you know, things are changing. Things are not like they used to be, and we need to be able to, you know, make changes if needed. So I would hope that you will, as I say, allow us, you know, to work with them and get some kind of... come to an agreement. Thank you.
Any more Spence?
I'm Bill Spence. The thing that kind of bothered me is, let's say we want to change businesses. We have quite an investment there, in case you don't realize it. The propane storage tanks that are right next to us, they had no trouble making them commercial, and that was back in the Moesbaugh days. I don't know if everybody remembers Moesbaugh, but they started those tanks, and you had no trouble. Up there at the Humane Society, they were RC, and immediately, they've changed to commercial. But here we are, really more commercial than anybody, maybe half the town. We're stuck in a platform that as long as we sell sacks, we're fine. But if we want to start a storage building or rent it out as something, we've... they said, "Well, yeah, come on down, and it'll cost you $20,000, and you can redo it." So we're hoping that, you know, you can see through us and possibly work something out there because we think we should be something besides... we even thought we should... when we started out on this, they said back in the 80s, we asked for a commercial zone, and we were... we were... I don't say we were denied it, but we were set with the RC. So we hope that we can work something out with you because we feel that, you know, like I say, we've got a tremendous investment there, and we're trying to look ahead. Thank you.
The public comments. The public comments online.
There are no raised hands online.
Very well. Seeing no further questions from the board, I will close this hearing, bring it back to the board for further discussion and a motion. Anyone? Any questions? Motion? Supervisor Fodor?
Can I get my light on? No questions. I was going to make a motion with the carve-out that Spencer's and the planning department continue to work to get a final solution on what has been discussed today.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this as it stands with the understanding that you will work with the Spence family to figure out an equitable solution.
Absolutely.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion, and I just also want to give a quick shout-out, if I could, to Michelle Plotnick in the planning commission and the myriad of stupid questions that have come from me that she's answered and you guys as well. So that's a second.
Please, sir.
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank all of staff. You guys did a great job. A lot of time, you know, I just took up a lot of time for a long time there in the planning commission for all the work they've done. They spent a lot of time on it, too.
Yes, they did.
Week after week after week, coming in, and you guys came up with a great product. The whole thing is great. And Julie, you had time spent on it, too, so thank you. And Peter, if things go wrong, your initial statements when you came... when we started this, you'll have to come back and take all of the heat, too.
So somebody we're forgetting, and that's Martha Miller. So I think that was one of Peter's best decisions that he made was to hire Martha. She's been absolutely fantastic to work with. You know, she's been able to keep us all focused and online while still recognizing the desire to have, you know, a code that meets the needs of Calvers County. And so Martha, I'm just... I'm going to miss your... our little weekly meetings, but it's been wonderful working with you, and we appreciate everything you've done for us. And you never know, maybe we'll be working with you again sometime soon.
Thank you. I want to add my voice to the choir of praise for the work that happened by the planning commission and by our staff. This is a monumental effort, 30 years since we've done this. It goes well with the general... it is part of the general plan that, Peter, on your last tour of duty with us, you got across the line. So I'm really... I want to thank all of you for putting in all this extra hard work. I want to thank the planning commission, who really, really earned their 100 bucks a month doing this, at least.
They might be asking for a raise.
With 2,087 parcels and only one in the room or two that were here earlier, that's pretty remarkable for a county of our size. So I want to thank everybody. We have a first, and we have a motion, we have a second. I will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's four, zero, one absent. Thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you.
If you want to stay, we have a couple of other things we wanted to take care of while you're up there. One was... these items are done, but one is setting the priorities for the next phase, if you want to take us through that, Peter.
Well, I hadn't really planned on addressing that today. What I'd like to do is come back the next couple of meetings and so talk about, you know, give you a list of all the things we're working on, all the things that we still have to work on that we haven't started yet, and get some feedback so that we can focus our attention now that Gina's free from this task. It's a new assignment for her.
Yeah.
So you come back in a week or so and tell... lead us through that discussion so we could help you set...
We'll agendaize an item for a discussion and study session on recordings.
Exactly. Thank you. We have... we don't have supervisor announcements, but I want to open that up if there's any comments from the board before we wrap up. I have one item that I need to seek counsel from the board on, whether we bring it back as an agenda item, and that is the fair board has asked us for access to the $644,000 that remained in that account, and I wanted to seek inputs from the board, whether you would like to see an agenda item on this item or not.
I say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Madam CEO, if you could bring that back for discussion and action, I would appreciate that. I think that's it. Is there anything else that we need to do? Madam Counsel? Madam CEO? Clerk?
No.
Thank you guys again very much. Thank you all for joining us in the meeting. We stand adjourned.